Motion to approve the minutes and the letters.
A second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, Ms. Grimes, are you...
Epstein's.
Okay, Ms. Grimes is Epstein. Okay. The motion carries. Do you all need a few minutes to look over the plans for the case, or do you want to just move right into that?
That's agreed.
Okay. Okay, before we get started with this case on the agenda, I'll read this opening statement to the applicant. If you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Stormwater Management Committee, you may appeal the decision by filing for a writ of certiorari with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the committee's decision. You are advised to seek the independent advice of legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been satisfied. And this case is number 2016-00023. This is the proposed Mill Creek Soccer Complex, and it's also now known as Orchard Bend Park. The addresses are 5601, 5611, and 5605 Pettis Road, map 173 parcels 95 and 96, and map 174 parcel 7. And the inspector is Sean Herman. The applicant's request. Variance number 2016-00023 was previously granted on September 1st of 2016 to allow the following. One, disturbance and encroachment of the floodway and 75-foot floodway buffer, 50-foot zone 1 and 25-foot zone 2 of Mill Creek for construction of multiple athletic soccer fields with associated grading and installation of EPSC measures as shown on the plan of record. Number two, excavation cut volume of 11,361 cubic yards below the 2-year elevation of 523.34 feet to be included in the compensating storage capacity calculations. Three, placement of stormwater BMPs in the buffer. Four, placement of modified buffer signage. And five, continuous mowing and maintenance of a significant portion of buffer. The grading permit application, number SWGRT 2016-039648, is currently under technical review. This special meeting is being held to address changes to the project's revised plan which impact the variance plan of record, and the appellant is requesting approval of the following revised variance request. One, disturbance and encroachment of the floodway and 75-foot floodway buffer, 50-foot zone 1 and 25-foot zone 2 of Mill Creek for construction of multiple athletic soccer fields with associated grading and installation of EPSC measures as shown on the revised plan of record. Two, excavation cut volume of 21,614 plus or minus 2,200, or 10%, cubic yards below the 2-year elevation of 523.34 feet to be included in the compensating storage capacity calculations. Placement of stormwater BMPs in the buffer, which includes additional BMPs not in the previously approved plan. Four, placement of modified buffer signage, and it also includes placement every 300 feet versus every 100 feet required, and I believe it's also alternative location rather than at the edge of zone 1. Four, placement of modified buffer sign...oh, that was the same one I read. And five, continuous mowing and maintenance of a significant portion of buffer. Appellant is Metro Parks and Recreation Department, being represented by Mr. Michael Pavan. Stormwater staff, and I'll quickly read the previous comments that were provided during the September 1st, 2016 meeting. One, the applicant is aware of the requirement to have TDEC and Core Jurisdictional determinations along with state and/or federal mitigation requirements, et cetera, submitted in the variance application. Copies of state and federal permit applications were submitted. As of this date, at that time, the applicant has submitted an email from the Corps stating that they have determined there are no...there are not wetlands on the site, and that a no-permit required letter was to be drafted. However, staff has not received a copy of a response from TDEC nor a final letter from the Corps. Two, per the overall landscape plan sheet L1.0, additional tree plantings have been proposed as mitigation. Staff requests further clarification of which areas will be mowed/maintained and which areas will remain undisturbed. For example, the 2 areas in the southwest and southeast corners of the property that are shown outside of the limits of disturbance, are they to be left undisturbed/no mow? And I believe at that meeting, they did provide...there is some narrative on the landscape plan that addresses that. Question, are the swells proposed as mitigation? And they did provide a response that they were. Four, at this time, the grading permit application, the same SWGRT 2016-039648, is under sufficiency review. Given the scope of the project, staff anticipates the possibility that there may be minor plan changes that will be needed. Staff requests clarification from the committee as to whether or not minor changes that do materially impact the variance will be allowed as determined by staff, or will any change in the plan necessitate a return to the committee? And at the time during that meeting, and in the meeting minutes, it was specified that if the amount of cut needed to be increased, they were to return to the committee, and also they thought they could do detention outside of the buffer, but it turns out that was not the case, so they did also have to return for that. Currently, the no-rise certification is under review, but I believe at this time it's been completed and submitted to staff. The applicant has provided an alternate plan that does require a variance. And then our current staff comments are as follows. In previous discussions with the appellant's representatives, it was indicated that there was an additional request to allow grading/land disturbance for construction of the soccer fields in sprigging to begin prior to issuance of a grading permit. However, it is not specified on the revised application. Is this a request for the revised application? Staff requests that clarification be provided on the project phasing and what variance, if needed, is being requested. Two, there are 4 bio-retention areas and 1 rain garden that are shown on the landscape plan, sheet L1.00, but not called out on the grading plan, sheet C2.00. Please clarify whether these are required or additional mitigation with the water quality swells and landscape mitigation plantings. If a revised variance is approved, staff requests that a condition be added that all bio-retention areas and rain gardens that are to be constructed for the purposes of either meeting water quality or mitigation shall be shown and labeled on the grading plan with details and shall be included in the long-term maintenance plan. Number three, the appellant has provided a signage plan with proposed sign placement locations identified. That's on sheet C1.0, shown as every 300 feet versus every 100 feet as required. Standard detail sheet, C5.40, shows the standard language, "Stream Buffer Do Not Disturb." Per discussion during the 9/1/16 meeting regarding signage and as a variance condition, number three, the appellant is to coordinate with staff on review and approval of the modified water quality buffer signage implement. Mrs. Doan had previously spoken with Ms. Ratz and offered available artwork that could be used. If a revised variance is approved, staff requests that this condition remain along with all other variance conditions. Four, is there a clearly identified maintenance plan included in the revised plan submittal that addresses managing the fields, fertilizer, et cetera? If so, please identify the location within the plans. If not, will the proposed soccer fields be maintained the same as existing metro soccer fields under an overall existing Metro Parks Maintenance Plan? Coats had no comment provided. Planning will defer to Stormwater for review, and it had no comments. And Greenway supports this project, as it provides recreation opportunities in an underserved area and supports the conservation efforts of the Greenways Division. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and if you could just introduce everyone at the table.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rebecca Rotz, and I'm with the Parks Department. And with me this morning are my colleagues from Call Your Engineering. We have Michael Pavan and Stephen...I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. So, thank you so much for agreeing to this special meeting. We, as we explained, when we requested this special meeting, we're really dealing with a matter of weeks on this project, these soccer fields. The ideal time to sprig is in the heat of the summer, and if we don't get the irrigation and the grading done, we can't get to that point. So, we're very appreciative of your time this morning. At the time we met with you last, as Ms. Key mentioned, you approved our variance application, and we're very appreciative of that. During technical review, several issues came up, and we're just back here to be forward and talk about those issues and hopefully move on with your continued approval. So, I'm going to turn it over to Michael to talk some more about those issues and how we've worked to resolve them.
And I want to echo Rebecca, and thank you all for being here for a special meeting this morning. We certainly appreciate it. Just, I guess, as a summary of the main changes, really the specific or the general variance requests that are in this application and that were in the first one are the same. The details that have changed, again, are the cut volume, and then specifically BMPs related to the parking that's shown in the flood zone. All of the parking is in the flood plain. None of it is within the buffer or the floodway. But in order...working with staff through the process of technical review, we decided that water quality and detention were going to be required as we got in and started looking at the time of concentration between hydrograph for Mill Creek versus the site. They're not even close to the same. So, treating that water became a goal, and as such, we've provided something that we feel is the best balance of treating the water quality, detaining the water, but also making sure that we're cognizant of their maintenance, Metro Parks, maintenance, urns, manpower, those types of things. So, as such, we evaluated a range of solutions for that, doing some previous pavements and things in the flood zone we determined weren't in Metro Parks' best interest due to flooding and the maintenance that would be required of that, be more specialized if we had to replace some of those. We start talking about vacuum trucks and things that they don't necessarily have the resources to do. So, we've gone towards the solution that you see in front of you. It's a large water quality swell. It will be a seeded surface to that. What we'll do is separate the media that will be in that swell with the geotex dial, hopefully keep all the sediment out of that, where Parks can come in with some low-tech maintenance to remove sediments without having to remove and replace all of that media. We also were very cognizant that this is a flood zone, so the elevations were a constraining factor as well. It's why it looks...it's a very large linear-type feature, but that's because we didn't have a lot of depth and certainly didn't want to put a large levee or some structure like that out there. So, that really dictates the footprint that you see, which encroaches into the buffer and into the floodway limit a little bit. We did sacrifice some parking from the original plan that we submitted to change this more, push it farther back out of the floodway. We would have to sacrifice more parking, which really means we're then going to have to sacrifice field space, and Parks is already at a deficit for the county in that, especially, I think, in this general area. So, that is the plan we have in front of you. And then all the additional...or the vast majority of the additional excavation is related to the construction of those features. They were some slight modifications, just with the tweaking a little bit of the field grades, just to make things work. All the swells that were part of the original application, tweaking some grades on that so that there's a minimum or a maximum of 6 inches ponding between those, and we still have a positive flow, but they're there to treat nutrient runoff from the fields. So, as far as the staff comments go, if I could address those quickly. The first one really depends on, I think, the feedback from the committee today. We would certainly like to move forward with the whole project, but as Rebecca mentioned, sprigging in the fields is really a time-sensitive matter. So, if we did need to go back and make some changes, we would like to entertain possibly breaking it into 2 applications so that they could proceed with that work as quickly as possible. It's in the interest of the long-term viability of the fields for athletic use, but also we're very cognizant that the fields are in this sensitive floodway, so we want to ensure that we have the best opportunity to reestablish vegetation on those, and time is critical of that. So, we feel pretty strongly, if we can't move forward quickly, that we might have to delay the project an entire year. And again, that's why we're really here today for the special meeting. Number 2, we've clarified that was really just in our haste to get things back, turned back in as an oversight. The grading plan was correct, and we've updated the other plans to match that. And then for number 3, the signage, I think I'll let Rebecca touch on that a little bit. We do have a plan. I think we're still consistent with our original application. We'd like to work with staff. The plan that we turned in, some of those details hadn't been worked out, but it's still our intention to do that, and we have a plan I'll let you talk a little bit more about. And then for number 4, in the original application, we did turn in a maintenance plan that is consistent with the overall plan for maintenance for Metro, and we are not deviating from that. So, that would remain consistent. And I guess with that, if anyone has any questions?
What is the 100-year flood elevation on the property?
As you're looking at that map, it varies a little bit, but the tree line that's very prominent, that's in the center of the site, corresponds pretty well with the 100-year flood.
But what is that elevation, do you know?
Um, it is...
I'm sort of trying to look it through here, and it's hard to find it.
I'm sorry, it's in the variance request, 5...
29.6.
523.34. No, that's 2-year, I'm sorry.
That's a 2-year, right?
I'm sorry, 2-year.
Yes, so as, you know, it's a very large site in the south. I guess that would be the southwest corner. The floodplain limit is at 529.6, and then as it leaves the site on the northern side, it's 528.5.
I just asked, I'm just curious about the requirement of the detention. I don't really understand why you would have to have detention on the property. You said something about the hydrographs. I mean, it looks like the...all the detention would actually be below the 100-year flood elevation, so...
Do you want to speak to that? We had a meeting on September 22nd with the staff, and we showed the hydro...both the hydro...of the hydrographs for the site and for the Mill Creek, and there is a bit...the site, the time of concentration is like 42 minutes, and the time of concentration for Mill Creek, as it...for it to get...for the beak to get to the site is like 23, 24 hours. So, during that period of time, there is a need for detention. There will be no...the 100...the 100-year will not arrive to the site. At the same time, the runoff for the 100-year goes through the site to Mill Creek, and that's why they wanted us to provide detention and retention treatment.
Okay. I don't know. It's just an engineering thing. It really doesn't have a lot to do with what you're asking for. I just, in most instances, I would thought we would just want the water just to get out of there, I mean, just be gone. And so, I mean, it's a cost and expense, I guess, that you're trying...that you're having to incur, that I just...I think maybe it's unnecessary. But just curious about that one. I mean, I know you have detention down here way, way down in the lower limits of the site. That's well below the...it's below the 2-year elevation, it looks like to me. And I know you're not requesting a variance to that, but it's just something that I noticed was curious about. I don't do a lot of design anymore, but that's just a basic, you know, concept, I guess, that we've always worked on, is that if you're in the adjacent to the creek especially, that you want that water to get away. And so, holding it back, I don't understand that one, so...
I see where you're coming from, and I've used that before. I don't think on this one, that's not what they're asking for, so I'm not questioning it as much, but it is an interesting...
I know that's not what they're asking for, but, you know, from my perspective, if it's something that wanted to be considered, I would certainly...I mean, I think your plans are beautiful. I mean, you spent a great deal of time putting this together. It's extraordinary, the amount of effort that you've done. I think you've done everything that you could possibly ask to do, and so, from the standpoint of your variance request, I see no problems whatsoever. I think the staff has looked at it. I think they've all had good comments and good suggestions. I know that during a process of developing a site like this, there's going to be many things that are going to come up that you're going to probably need a little flexibility on. I know you don't want to come before this committee for every little thing you're going to encounter. That makes perfectly good sense to me as well. And so, all that sounded good, but to me, when I'm just looking at the detention requirement, that's sort of a glaring thing that I see that I'm thinking, I don't quite understand it. I know you're not asking for that, but it's just something I noticed that I wanted to point out.
I appreciate your insight on that. Talk to me about the increase in volume below the 2-year. In the previous variance, it was 11,000, and we're about double that now. Well, why are we cutting so much between that, below that 2-year?
Most of that can be contributed to...for the water quality. There's a large forbey that then flows into the water quality swell, and then, of course, for the detention, the vast majority of it can be attributed to that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, if I might, is it in your purview to...if we amended our request, to eliminate that detention? Just speaking from a Parks standpoint, having a hole in the ground doesn't serve a whole lot of purpose. You know, having it be flat, people can picnic there, things like that. So, just from a functional standpoint, I don't know what that does for our timeline.
Well, I don't know. It may affect...
Really, what's more important now is the fields, but maybe we could even get started on the fields, since the fields really haven't changed a whole lot and still work through the other issue. It's just a matter of being able to get on...out on site to get irrigation and the fields graded.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what...eliminating that, how that would affect your design and all that. It would probably have some effects on it that staff would probably need to look at. So, I would probably think we should go ahead and proceed on with what we have on the plate today, but I think it's something you could look at personally. It's an option. I would agree with you. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have, you know, holes in the ground out there where people are having all these outdoor activities. I don't know that it's needed, and again, during a 100-year event, it's all going to be underwater anyway, so I just don't quite understand it. But again, I don't do that much design anymore. I'm mostly a planning guy now, but it's just something that I noticed.
All right, thank you. Do we want to cover buffer signage? You've asked to take it from 100, every 100 foot to 300. Is there a little bit of rationale behind that?
Rebecca's going to pass something out, but we've proposed kind of a minimum level that we felt would still be very visible if we used the traditional buffer signs, but the plan she has now, I think, goes back to the original intent of what was discussed at the last hearing.
And we are, if we need to go with 100 feet for the sign, the stream buffer standard sign, we're willing to do that, but we'd like to make an effort to be a little more creative, take the opportunity on a site where we're going to have a lot of people, a lot of people walking the trail, a lot of people out at these soccer games to actually do some education. So, I just put together, and these are some of the signs that I got from Rebecca Doan, so...and we'll work to modify them, you know, the text to our site, but generally, there's 3 types of signs on the map that I provided. So, the smaller 3-panel signs are sign A in yellow. The sort of flat but larger, probably 24 by 36, signs are the B in orange. And then we already have our trailhead sign at the greenway trailhead, and we would work to incorporate more information into that trailhead sign. So, these are sort of strategically located at major points of intersection and congregation for the site, and we'd rather spend our money on getting a little more information out to the public than once...and, you know, you can see the tick marks for 100 foot on here, and walking along what's supposed to be a natural greenway and seeing a little white sign every 100 feet is just...it's kind of a visual distraction, so...
Good deal. Thanks for the clarification. I'm good with that.
I mean, it really does help educate the public more than the, you know, the plain signs. I think this is very beneficial.
No, I agree. I'm kind of fond of them, too. So, and they seem to have got them at key places, too, where people will be walking around, you know, stopping points and points to view it, so I can appreciate that. Maintenance plans. I can't remember...we may have one in front of us. Do we have a maintenance plan, or what are the maintenance plans and how will that be addressed, especially fertilizers?
I believe in your comments, you mentioned it was...I don't think we've gotten one from Christian, the reviewer, Christian Thompson, so it had been submitted to him? Okay, yeah, we did.
The actual fertilizer plan and such may have been left out of that, but we will make sure it does get submitted.
Well, and we had submitted a copy to you as part of the initial variance and talked about the fertilizers that we use and the timing of those, and Christian has asked that they, yes, be part of the...
Long-term.
Long-term maintenance plan.
So, it's the same...
We'll make sure he gets...yes, it's the same.
Same plan from before? Okay. Okay. I can remember talking about that at the first variance, and if we're going to compromise the buffers, let's be very much in control of our fertilization and erosion, because that buffer's there to clean it if we're reducing it a little bit.
I guess I wanted to go back to the initial comment again, as far as what you're actually proposing to accomplish. Are you wanting to get a variance, revised variance, and then move forward with the rest of the review process and eventually get your grading permit? Or are you looking to start prior to approval of an issue at some grading permit?
It would be the first. We'd like to get the variance amended or a new issue, new variance issued, whichever the case would be, but then move forward with technical review and permit the whole project and move forward.
And also, I have received, I guess, an additional set of some revised plans. Was that pertinent to some changes? Did you want to kind of briefly describe those? And then the last item in your packet at the very bottom, you'll see a set of plans dated March 15th. It's stamped, "They were submitted to us." Is that supposed to reflect some changes?
Yeah, and Stephen, please correct me if I misspeak, but those are really in response to staff comment number 2, where some things were mislabeled between the grading plan and the erosion control plan and landscape plan of what was what as far as water quality features.
Okay, so you don't have the 4 bio-retention areas, rain garden, they're not...
The required practices were 3 bio-retentions and 1 bio-swell. Nothing else. That's what we did...that's what we showed on the revised sheets. It's...there are a total of 7 revised sheets.
And so, everything on that revised sheet represents a treatment practice?
Just clarification, clarification, taking out what shouldn't be there and putting out more clarification to what... out more clarification to what, if this is about calling out bio-retention, bio-swale on the landscape plan and on the sediment control plan and on the green plan.
Okay, so I guess you would need to address that because those are revised, revised plans, corrected revised plans. So if you do an approval, it would be based on with the submittal of those plans that have been given, those additional sheets.
Okay, so we have the planner record existing, where the plan they submitted with their application, then we have revisions. Okay, so we need to make sure we're talking, anything approved is based on revised plans?
Final revision, I guess.
Okay.
And I guess also, address whether there would be some instance where it's still going through technical review. So there could be some additional changes. Would you allow that to be done by staff or approved by staff?
I think we're all kind of quiet today.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to address or to make a motion. I mean, there seems to be so many moving parts to it. I mean-
Yeah, it does.
You want to attempt to do it? Understand it better?
Not sure I understand it all completely. I'm still wrapping my hands around it too. There's additional BMPs in the, coming from the initial variance. Now we have additional BMPs and those BMPs are looking like the pond and give me a verbal what additional BMPs are in the-
So the additional BMPs, I guess-
The four-bay and the detention practice and the bio-swale.
I'm sorry, Mr. Keres, can you speak up just a little bit? We didn't hear you in the microphone.
There is a four-bay, four-bay and there is a detention pond and there is a bio-swale. Those are the three additional practices that we have.
Which are all associated with the parking lot that's down in the floodplain. So as you look at the plan, those would be just to the east of the lower parking lot.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The one element that I think we would want a little bit more clarification on is the ongoing maintenance of the field as it requires or as it relates to chemical applications. Could you speak to that briefly?
Well, it's going to be a little difficult for me to speak to it without having that plan right in front of me, but the main, the main point was that we plan to apply the chemicals only when we see that there's not supposed to be a weather event for several days and that way, we can water them in and we can lower the risk of them washing into Mill Creek. We talked a lot the last time about the fact that we will either, you know, as parks, be maintaining these or leasing them and we will make this regimen, we'll put limits on the application, the chemical types and also outline the application timeline so that anyone who leases these fields will have to comply with that. When we went over the chemicals last time, all I remember is that, I think it was phosphorus, that we didn't want running off into Mill Creek and that we don't use that as part of our chemical usage anyways, on any of our fields. So it's, we don't even have to kind of make that a record, I mean, we can get in the record, but we don't have to alter our regular practices for that. We will be mowing weekly, usually for soccer fields, but then the, we'll have the no-mow areas designated, we'll probably need to add some signage for that so that no matter who is doing that will know not to disturb those areas. And then the swales between the fields will get mowed every, probably every other month or so during the season and then we can let them grow when soccer is, when the fields aren't being used in the off-season.
So there will be some written outline regardless of who's involved, of what the practice should be?
Yes, yes. And we can make that part of our official lease, if we lease it out to someone, and then we'll put it in the long-term maintenance plan so that it can be on your records as well.
Sometimes what we've seen is some folks think more is better as it relates to fertilizers, applying it just before, during rainfalls and things of that nature that can cause more issues than what you might envision, so thank you.
Yep. So it's based on your comments, so is this the first type of, I guess, that type of maintenance plan that you all are initiating or do you have another part that's similar practices?
I don't think at this time we have anything official, but we have no-mow zones as standard practice all across our system and even within the golf system that gets regular, you know, where we have designations between different mowing areas. And we worked actually closely with the golf folks who do turf management to discuss the chemicals to be used on this and how we might sign it. So nothing official, but yes, in practice.
If I might add, I do recall, as we've worked with the parks golf courses before, that they hold a certain certification that part of that requires them to evaluate nutrient management. So I think they do have some level of expertise within the parks department of making sure those applications are appropriate.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this application as submitted. I'll expand on that in just a second. This piece of property was used agriculturally for many years. I'm very familiar with it. I went to Annapolis High School. This is probably an improvement. It's an area that's underserved by parks. It has a multicultural background, so there's probably a very strong need for soccer fields in this area and I'm sure the council member is very supportive of this. I know he is. So again, I want to make a motion to approve the variance as requested with staff comments. In the staff comments, there were probably questions that needed to be answered and I would say that the applicant just needs to work with the staff to make sure that staff has all the answers to their questions, that you also present a plan of maintenance that's submitted to the staff so they understand exactly how this is going to be maintained, that staff be given flexibility to work with applicants so that you're not having to come back to the committee for those, to answer those questions or modifications and that during construction, that if situations occur that require modifications to the plans, that you be, also be allowed by staff to make those changes without having to come back to the committee. I know that there are probably stormwater features that occur within the buffers and that may be part of your quest. I think that's perfectly reasonable in this scenario and I think I will again point out from my perspective, although you're not asking for it, that if you ever did come back, that I think that we would consider possibly removing detention on this property for safety purposes more than anything else because there'll be a lot of kids there, they'll probably playing there before that 100-year event comes down and you'll be impounding water there and kids are going to want to get in water. And so, from that perspective, even from a safety standpoint, I think that that maybe should be something that's reconsidered. So that's my motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Can I add that I do think maybe they can work with staff just to make sure that there is additional signage showing where not to mow, but I love the signs that you guys are providing. I don't think you have to do more of the standard stream buffer signs, but just, I know you said you do that on your other projects, but just so it's in the record.
Mr. Dale, I guess, does that include the original condition still remaining and one of those was to work with staff on the signage and location?
Sure.
If all those were-
Yes, that would be my understanding.
Any conditions on when that we do want to see them back? I mean, for example, if that detention pond were to get bigger for some reason, do we want to see them back?
I personally feel like that staff should have the ability to work with this applicant. I can't see any reason that we would need to revisit this. In my motion, do we discuss the springing? Was that part of, is that laid out in your request already that you wanted to start early on possibly?
I think if we can move forward with this variance, we've coordinated with staff and I feel confident that the rest of the technical review can happen in a way that we can still facilitate.
Okay, I mean, I just think this overwhelmingly, this is a great benefit to the community and it's something that should occur here. And so, I would encourage staff to work with you to the greatest extent possible in order to expedite this, to get this need addressed.
Building on that as a friendly amendment, we want to give them the ability or give staff the ability to phase this out. So I would add to your motion that I support, or I'm not sure how to word this, but yeah, staff can work with them on phasing this if we need to phase the plans to get approvals to move faster. I want to add that to the motion, we're comfortable with a phasing approach.
All of these are friendly. There's never been an unfriendly.
They're still friendly.
No, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, there are none, that motion carries.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
I will just move on to the business portion. We have nothing else additional on this agenda, so unless you have something, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. That's unanimous, the motion carries. We'll see you in April. Okay.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.